Okay, you're gonna do the attendance and everything?
Huh?
You're gonna do the attendance?
I know the council is second.
But I mean, you're gonna do the attendance?
He's coming up, I'll do the attendance. Unless he comes out and does it.
Okay, all right, so just in case, all right?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. Thank you, whatever you just did, you put the black tape across it?
Yeah.
Uh... Okay, you're right.
He made it.
Yeah, you made it, Michael. You're gonna get a $25 fine. Okay. 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 The, uh, meeting of the city council will come to order. Uh, clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Here.
Counselor Delasola?
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Here.
Counselor DePiero?
Here.
Counselor Mangan?
Counselor Matusky?
Here.
Counselor McKinnon?
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Here.
Counselor Paoletano?
Here.
Counselor Seminelli?
Here.
Counselor Hanlon?
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
Four members present, will the audience please join us in standing and fielding the flag? Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Standing because we have a retired, sorry, retired captain of the police department who passed away, Captain Patrick McAdams, and also Officer Glenn Breiley, who passed away during his tour of duty. A few minutes of silence, please. Thank you.
This Chairman, could I just rise on a point of personal privilege?
Yes.
Uh, as everybody knows, in the community, there was a fire yesterday at the Immaculate Conception Church, and, um, I just wanna give the tip of the hat to the Everett Fire Department. I understand, talking to some of the managers, that the, uh, the fire department went to great lengths to make sure that the stained glass windows there, which are short for a substantial amount of money, uh, stayed intact. Uh, they did a great job, and they really stepped up their, they show why we're as proud as we are of our fire department. So I wanna take that opportunity to thank them, on behalf of the Immaculate Conception Church.
Thank you. I want a public announcement, um, from the Department of Veteran Services. The mayor's Office of Veteran Services would like to invite all of the city citizens to the Memorial Day Solid Services to be held at May 30th at the Glenwood Cemetery. We'll meet at the gate at 9:30 a.m. and march into the gazebo at 10:00 a.m. As a community, honor the sacrifice of our men and women who gave their, all, um, their freedom that we enjoy here today. Uh, and also a note that reminds us that volunteers are needed to help place flags on the graves of veterans at Glenwood Cemetery on Saturday, May 14th at 9:00 a.m., Woodlawn Cemetery on Sunday, the 22nd at 9:00 a.m. We'll meet in the, uh, parking lot behind the chapel. Thank you. Okay, clerk will read first item on the agenda.
First item is a public hearing. To all parties interested in the petition of National Grid and Verizon of New England Incorporated, request permission to locate pole's wires, fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across Robin Street to install one jail pole beginning at a point approximately 20 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Robin Street and Thondike and continuing approximately 160 feet in a northeasterly direction, National Grid, to install plus or minus 160 feet of two-to-five inch conduits encased in concrete from existing MH319 at the intersection of Robin. Install a new pole 1338 and a half, approximately 60 feet southwest of existing pole 1338.
Yes, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could, could we have the petitioner before us, just to give us an overview before it opens to the public?
Is a petitioner present? Will the petitioner please come forward? Please state your name and address for the viewing audience.
Dan Cameron of National Grid offices at 170 Medford Street in Malden.
I'm, uh, Tim Williamson, I'm a contractor for National Grid, uh, my company is Leidos Engineering.
Okay, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to the invited guests, why don't you just give us a general overview of what is that you're looking to do? And that way, the folks there in the audience, as well as the council members, get a better appreciation, and if there are any questions, comments, they can respond from there.
Okay, um, actually, uh, there's two other petitions, so the start, the story will be the same. Um, this is, uh, this work is necessary in order for National Grid to get ready for the new wind project. Um, so we have a combination of some poles to set and then conduit to install. Uh, there's three different locations, um, so at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Tim, who's our consultant, consulting engineer, and has been working on this project.
Okay, um, starting with our, uh, the first, um, item that we just read, uh, we'd be starting at the intersection of Thornbake and Robin Street and installing two five-inch conduits, um, hundred, approximately 160 feet to an existing pole, and, um, setting one new pole, um, 60 feet from the adjacent pole. And that allows us to add, um, some switching and some flexibility into the existing system that's there, and, uh, help expand the infrastructure a little bit. Um, did you want me to wait on that first one, or do you want me to go through the other two as well?
There's no petition to pass on three of them? Or one of them?
No, it's up to you, but what you guys, whatever you guys want.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's up to the, up to the body, Mr. President, but if they're here, they might as well speak on all three, and just, and then, you know, we could take them individually at that point.
Well, I'd like to just have a motion on it.
Will be motion to take items two and three collectively with item number one?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, you can tap on items two and three.
Um, so item two, uh, we have at, um, Tyleson Street, um, this one is just installing one new pole, um, and that's between, um, May Street and Kelvin Street. Um, and the third, uh, item is on Air Force Road, um, approximately in front of the Boston Coach Facility, and that is to relocate a pole, um, approximately 10 feet, and that'll help, um, that'll help align the conductors and give all the clean angles on the pole lines. Um, and then there will also be one new pole, uh, adjacent to that.
Any questions from the council, please indicate which item you want, one, two, or three. Uh, Counselor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, questions on all three of them, so...
Okay.
I don't know if you wanna go one by one?
No, all three, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Cameron, thank you for appearing tonight. Will any of this work be done at nighttime? I know we're gonna be doing some Broadway work at Thondike and Robin Street. Will any of this be nighttime work?
Um, the pole work, no, but the conduit work, um, usually, we, you know, based on the traffic and so forth, um, if the city would like us to do it at night, um, much like we did on a project on Robus Street, we can, we can do that. We plan to do it during the day, but if it works better at night, we can do it at night.
I know we just approved last meeting for Comcast to do some work, to run some, uh, some utilities into the wind casino site, and we approved them to do 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., but that area is more afford one where Counselor Matusky and Counselor Capone. But I have questions on that item two. Tyleson Street, we have the, uh, the Adams School, um, so you have a lot of traffics between, uh, first thing in the morning and 2:00 o'clock or so in the afternoon because of the school. Will we be able to do something with the hours so that we're not inconveniencing the school, especially where we're at the corner of Calvin Street, which is, uh, right, right now, almost on top of the Adams School?
Yeah, we, we could do that. We could do that on a Saturday.
Okay, we could do that on Saturday, that's what I was hoping you were gonna say, Saturday. And really, the only other one is Air Force Road, um, you can almost do it anytime because it's really not impacting anybody down there. It's kinda, it goes nowhere down there, so, um, that is fine. But if we could do item number two on a Saturday, that would be really good to not inconvenience, uh, the flow of traffic for schools. I would really appreciate that being able to be, uh, to be done. Thank you for appearing tonight.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for each of these projects, what are you looking at for timeframe? To complete the work?
Uh, the, the pole work on each of these, um, can all be done within a day or a half day. They're all pretty small, and the conduit installation can be done in a, a day as well. One day to install, and then probably the second day to finish restoration.
Okay.
And they'll do temporary restoration as needed.
And are they all going on at the same time, or gonna be staggered?
Um, I don't think we have a specific schedule planned yet, but they're all kind of disparate locations.
The only thing I'd ask is work with the various departments in the city in terms of the timing, when, so it has the least amount of impact on the community, on travels, et cetera, so... Definitely. Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I, I noticed this is a co-sponsor with Verizon. Uh, there's nobody here from Verizon?
No, look, 'cause we're the, uh, we're the custodian in, in Everett, with the pole setter in Everett.
It says National Grid and Verizon of New England, so... But, you know, we have issues with double poles, not to, uh, get into that, but it's been mentioned that Verizon is probably the cause of not being able to get rid of some of these double poles. And, uh, I hope that you can work with them in the future, I mean, their name is on this order.
Yeah.
They should've been here. But I will vote for this, it's only a day and a half construction, and, um, just to, Tim, I don't get your last name.
Uh, Williamson.
Mr. Williamson, um, these are, these neighborhoods that you're in are mixed juice. They're residential, they're industrial, and they're commercial, but the residents have priority and preference with me, anyway.
Definitely.
So we always wanna respect the homeowners in that area. There may not be many on Robin Street, but there were four or five homes there. And, uh, you know, it's my intention, as a member of the city council, to actually get some relief when work like this is happening, so the less impact on the residential factor is where I'm at here. But it's only a day and a half, so it's not a dragged-out affair, and you'll be repairing the, any work that you do to the street, not that it's, it's loaded with potholes now, anyway, but...
Yeah, we'll be, uh, we'll be doing full, uh, full grind and lay, uh, overlay for the trench area.
Oh, good.
Um, and we've coordinated with, um, we've discussed these with, um, Wynn and, um, with EverSource, 'cause they have a future project going down Robin Street that'll eventually, uh...
Oh, so this is tied into the...
This'll be done before that work, which is good, because then that way, when they come doing through, they'll come through and do curb-to-curb paving, and then it'll be a fresh red.
Good. Well, thank you, Mr. Williamson, for being here tonight.
Indeed. One other note, um, with the new poles, uh, there'll be brand-new sets, so there will be no new double poles from this work.
Good, well, we're trying to eliminate them in the city. We're actually doing a ordinance that's in committee now, to eliminate the, I don't know, 100 double poles that are in the city. 80. But anyway, uh, we'll visit that area in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Delasola?
A few of my questions were answered, just the other, it looks like the first piece will be the longest one, correct?
The conduit.
Time-wise, will the job be a 160-feet conduit?
Yep, that'll be the bigger piece.
That's a longer one?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted, I just saw that update, the first one is, could be three or four days, the other ones, like you said, day, day and a half at the most.
At the most, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All this work being done, is this something that's temporary, or it's permanent?
They will be permanent.
This is all permanent work?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor McGlaughlin?
Could I just make a motion, uh, that we had meant item number two by adding...
Uh, Counselor, we'll do the motions after we excuse the gentleman, okay?
I apologize.
Okay. Any further questions? Gentlemen, I might bring to your attention items 15 and 16 on our calendar this evening. Uh, you don't have to look at it now, but, uh, you're just making it under the wire. If these were before items one, two, and three, you'd be in a different situation right now. But please make yourself aware of those things. And, uh, thank you very much for appearing, you are excused with a customary thanks, and, um, just don't leave the chambers until we're all finished, okay?
Thank you, Counselors.
Counselor McGlaughlin? You have an amendment?
On item number two, if I could put an amendment that...
Okay, hold on, will you hold on to that, Counselor? Hold on to that, I'm gonna do one, two, and three now, okay. On item number one, um, which is the, uh, joint old pole on, on Robin Street, is there anyone in the audience that's in favor of this petition? I'm going to ask three times. Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? And is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? I'll declare that part of the hearing for item number one closed. Is there anyone opposed to this petition, item number one? Is anyone opposed to the petition? Is there anyone opposed? I declare that part of the public hearing closed. On the motion for favorable action, or whatever you wanna do?
Favorable action on item number one.
Motion made in second, any further discussion, hearing done, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Paoletano?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Ten years zero days, Mr. President.
You have, um, granted the order. Item number two...
Mr. Chairman, items two and three need to be read?
Yes.
I believe so. Items two and three need to be read, they weren't read yet.
Yes, okay. On item number two, which is the joint old pole at, um, Tyleson Street and Kelvin Street, Counselor McGlaughlin?
They need to be read first.
Hasn't been read by the clerk yet. Oh, I'm sorry, we haven't read them.
Sorry, hold on, but I'm sorry...
Item number two, to all parties interested in the petition from National Grid and Verizon of New England Incorporated, to request permission to install one jail pole beginning at a point approximately 65 feet southeasterly of the center line of the intersection of Tyleson Street and Kelvin Street, National Grid, to install new pole at 1162 and a half, Tyleson Street, approximately 75 feet west of existing pole 1163.
Okay.
Know what that half means.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Are we sure? Could I make, could I make a, a motion for amendment to add that item number two will be done on Saturday due to school inconvenience?
Second motion?
Motion for done on Saturdays? And do we have a second?
Second.
Second motion made in second, any further discussion? On the motion in favor of having this done on a Saturday, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, on the Saturday. On...
Action on the order?
Favorable action on the order as amended. Counselor Capone?
Did we do the public hearing portion on this one yet?
Yes, did, did.
Oh, no, we did not.
We did number one.
Yeah, we, we didn't.
No, we just did one.
We did one, sorry.
So, uh, this is a public hearing, then. No one, anyone in favor of, uh, item number two? Is anyone in favor of item number two? Is there anyone in favor of item number two? Declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody opposed to item number two? Anyone opposed to item number two? Anyone opposed to item number two? Declare that part of the public hearing closed. Uh, now the motion is before you. Motion for favorable action and seconded, any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Mangan?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Ten years zero days, Mr. President.
Ten years, you have granted the petition. Clerk will read item number three.
Item number three, to all parties interested in the petition from National Grid requesting permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Air Force Road. National Grid to install one SO pole and relocate, and relocate one SO pole beginning at a point approximately 825 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Norman Street and Air Force Road and continuing approximately 35 feet in an easterly direction. National Grid to relocate existing SO pole 23, Air Force Road, plus or minus 10 feet in a northwesterly direction toward existing pole 22. Across road from new P-23 location, plus or minus 35 feet in an easterly direction. Install push, brace, and anchor.
Any discussion? Well, we have the public hearing on it, I believe.
Just on number one.
All right, okay, so, all right, if this is a public hearing, then, uh, is anyone coming forward to speak on this? Are opposed to this public hearing? No one. I'll ask again, is anyone in favor of this petition? Second time, anyone in favor of this petition? Third time, anyone in favor of this petition? Declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody opposed to this petition? Anyone opposed to this petition? Anyone opposed to this petition? I declare that part of the hearing closed.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
Motion made in second for favorable action, clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Ten years zero days, Mr. President.
Ten years, you have granted the petition. Okay, public participation is next.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have three speakers?
Make it, open it.
So I'll make a motion to open public participation?
Motion made in second to open public participation, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Three peoples, uh, that'll be about three minutes each, go ahead.
Okay, the first person is Craig Hardy.
You wanna speak now? Okay, uh, name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Craig Hardy, I live at 14 Englewood Ave. in Everett. And I'm also here, I'm, uh, the president of the Everett Firefighters Local 143, and, uh, Mr. President, I come up here to talk to you about, in the council, about item number six tonight, which is to remove the fire chief from civil service. Just to give a brief little history, two years ago, we were up here, the chief and, uh, myself as a union representative, and we spoke adamantly against this move. It was not even, I don't even know if it was taken to a vote, but if it was, it was thrown out, and we visited this, less than two years ago, actually, it was in 2014, though. I actually met with the mayor a couple hours ago, with his chief of staff, and with the human resource together, and we discussed this issue. Our union and myself were notified about this three hours ago at 4:00 p.m. when I came up for the meeting, and I looked at the agenda. I have roughly, as you can see, probably 25 members of the fire department here that were notified two and a half hours ago. So as you can tell, this is a very important issue, just from our stance, but the reason for this, the way the promotional process works in our business, through ranks of lieutenant, captain, deputy, right to the fire chief, they're all civil service, and it's very competitive. Our members who strive to be an officer and succeed, study very hard, put a lot of time in, and then for them to get to the point of, to possibly hit the pinnacle of their career, and if they do wanna succeed and be a chief, for this to be taking away from them is just awful and not right. My men work very hard, and right now, we have five deputy chiefs that are very capable, and the reason why this issue is before you, because we just were notified that our chief is retiring in the next so many weeks, I believe July 10th is his last day. Currently, we do not have a chief's list, the reason for this, like we explained a few years ago, is the chief had no admiration of leaving, there was no thing of leaving. As of right now, I know for a fact that three of our deputies are interested in being the chief, and the correct way to do this is to call for a special exam for the chief, have the men who have been competing their whole lives and succeeding to the job, take the exam, make it fair and square, and keep the job in civil service. That's why I stand before you today, obviously, I know it's just a quick piece on, I'm not sure if you'll be voting on this evening, but the Everett Fire Chief and the Everett Union is 100% against us, and I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul and Irene Cadella.
Who is it?
Is that me?
Oh. Oh. (pause) (inaudible). 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 Please, please state your name and address.
Irene Cadella, 25 Rose Hill Ave. Name and address.
Paul Cadella, 25, Paul Cadella, 25 Rose Hill Ave. in Everett, Mass. 0249.
Can we begin? Okay, oh, first of all, I just wanna say thank you, um, for letting us come again, and, um, thank you for all the council people here that have really shown concern for our little corner of the world, the church, so, thank you, thank you, thank you. The main reason I'm here tonight is, on church street, the markings on the street, I think they're called Chevron, zebra stripes, yellow stripes, white stripes. Big event at the church, May 22nd, for the Haitian community. The reason it is important to me is 'cause it's church, and I love church, 'cause I was asked that at City Hall. So, um, we would appreciate it if, and we're praying, that that could all be removed prior to that, and then, as I understand, later on, the parking and the, uh, traffic situation is gonna be addressed. But again, this is really important to us, and again, Pastor Daniels in the Northshire Church is inviting everyone there, the whole community is invited, it's a day that we worship God, and, um, I thank you for hearing our concerns.
Yeah, just one, one other thing, the chevrons that they painted, they face the wrong way, they're facing up the one way, if not for the church on the 22nd, just for public safety factor, just addressed, it's not doing some painting on it, because they said they're gonna do it right away, there was a meeting we went to last week, but they said due to the weather aspect, which is fine, but we lost Friday, it was good, now, until next week is supposed to be good, good weather all the way across. If not so much for the, the church, which we, they've been praying for, but just for public safety factor, could you, you know, to do it? 'Cause we have a, we're renting to a music school on, in June, but we're hindering on it because it's very confusing to walk the kids across the street back and forth. Now, if it's not gonna be painted by then, we're gonna have to cancel him, and he's have to go somewhere else, 'cause the money we raise from that just goes back into the church and into the community, because we open our doors to anybody who comes in, there's no charge to come or go.
And just one other thing, back in 1963, two doors down the street, when the Devon School caught on fire, it's on your Facebook, on the Everett Facebook, the school caught on fire, I think one of the teachers was Mrs. Cunningham. Well, our church, First Baptist Church, opened the doors for those children, and they were allowed to go there several months. We opened the doors for the city of Everett. We're asking the city of Everett to please open their doors, help the church now. It's a small little thing, but regardless, if they don't paint, we still will have a marvelous service. But the chevrons that are backwards or upside down should be fixed for safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
I don't have any other speakers, so I'll make a motion to close public participation.
Anyone else? No, yeah, I thought you said three people. Oh, that was the three people?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made in second to close public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have closed public participation, thank you.
I do have a sign and sheet.
Okay.
If we could please suspend the rule and take item number six.
Motion made in second to take item number six, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, item number six, clerk will please read item six.
Item number six is an order sponsored by Counselor John Hanlon as president in order petitioning the great general court relative to exempting the position of chief of the fire department of the city of Everett from the provisions of civil service law.
Anybody?
According to our rule.
Recommendation. We have to make a recommendation to vote on.
Yes, Counselor McGlaughlin.
I would make a motion that we invite up Craig Hardy of the firefighters' union, if he'd like to share any insight on this more than he has already done in public participation.
Second, anybody? Motion made in second to invite gentleman forward, any objections? Please come forward, sir. Again, state your name and address.
Craig Hardy, fourteen Inglewood Ave., Everett, Mass. Again, I mean, I can just reiterate that we have a process in place, we're a civil service department, the chief's been in civil service since, as long as I know, the department's been up and running. I don't see no need to change it, I understand this is something from the mayor, where he feels that whatever his reasonings are, where I had a discussion with him today, but obviously, I'll let him speak for himself in front of this, if you guys call him in here, I'm not going to say what we spoke about, I'll speak on my end, where we were up here two years ago, the chief and the union, which is rare, and the chief even said it that night, it's rare for us to agree, but we agree on this wholeheartedly, that if you come up through the ranks of the Everett Fire Department, and you've got twenty, twenty-five, thirty years on the job, there is no need for it to be possibly outsourced and not our members of our department. It should be fair, it should stay in civil service, and that's how it should stay.
Counselor Delasola.
Greg, good evening. How many fire chiefs have we had in the last twenty years?
I believe we might, in twenty years, we might have had three, but Chief Butler has been in there, I want to say, for a good fifteen years. I believe Chief Sheddham was there, I'm not sure of his tenure, but he might have been there, let's say, three to four years, and I believe before that might have been Chief Colometta.
And they all went through the ranks, correct?
Yes, every one of them came through the ranks, yes.
And when they actually go, like this year, if he's retiring in July, you have four deputies looking for that position?
We have currently five active deputies and one deputy vacant spot, so we have five current deputies that are eligible for the exam. And just a little quick history, that chief's exam was called, and is, there's an exam being taken this May, but the notification from our chief didn't come in until after the deadline. So the members weren't aware of the sudden vacancy that's going to occur. So civil service right now has a system in place where obviously, the exam's not going to be called and certified before, let's say, July eleventh, when the vacancy's there. So there is a process where the city has started to possibly have a provisionary chief selected from one of our deputies to be a provisionary chief until a special exam's called and a permanent chief is assigned. And as I said, three members, three members have already shown interest.
Who would pick, let's call it temporary chief?
The provisionary chief, I mean, they've asked for a resume, but there's a process, but that is the hiring authority, which is the mayor.
So he would pick the chief right now?
He would pick the provisionary chief out of our pool of deputies.
Okay.
And just so you know, if it is taken out of civil service, they don't have to pick, they could do a nationwide serf, which is costly to the city to do all those interviews, it is a, there is a money factor involved also to do the research, but in general, for this council to tell our fire department that you could pick somewhere from anywhere that didn't come up through our ranks or drive on our rigs, it would cause a real friction problem in the future with the chief of our department trying to be the chief commander of our membership. It would be really difficult.
Okay, one more question. When they take the exam, highest score gets it, that's it?
Yes, yes, highest score on past practice has get it, unless they do an interview process, where the people that have passed the exams do sit down with the mayor and do an interview. But our past practice is the highest exam, has, he always has been most qualified, and because he scored the highest on the test, because it is so competitive, he's awarded the job.
All right, thank you.
Counselor McGlaughlin, sorry for cutting you off, I thought you were finished, but go ahead.
That's okay, Mr. President, no problem. To my left, there's twenty-five members that we all know on this city council, twenty-five members that have protected our community for years, guys that I respect wholeheartedly. I do have a couple of questions, because I wasn't here in two thousand and fourteen when this came before the city council at that point, so I'm kind of learning this tonight for the first time, to be truthful, so I think it's going to possibly go to committee, but I would like to see if the mayor is in the building, and invite the mayor down to answer a few questions. I believe he is here in the building, and I'd like to ask for him to appear before us tonight.
Counsel, I'm sorry, Counsel, Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
To Mr. Hardy. Civil service, when will that, what, when will that test be coming out, for them to take it?
Uh, when they call a special exam, I don't believe civil service will rush anything, so to speak. I believe it would fall in where they usually hold them annually, so I mean, I'm just guessing here, don't take me to throw up, but it probably would take a little bit of a process, whether it would be a whole year, it might be called next May, I'm not sure, it could be possibly in the fall, but that would probably be the earliest.
So the intimate period of time, the deputy chiefs will be acting chiefs?
There would be a provisionary chief chosen in that interim, yes.
And then, I voted against this the last time it came up before us, and I'll be doing so this time, so.
Thank you.
Uh, I believe that, just as a statement, if you're going through the ranks and this is your job, and you've been going through the whole time, and you're sitting in a house with your men for thirty years, and then you finally get to that pinnacle point where you should be the chief, you should have the opportunity to do that.
I agree.
That's just my feeling on it.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I don't think we can vote on this tonight, according to our charter. It has to be laid over for the next two weeks, just so you understand what we're doing. So, by right, we have to give anybody questions seven days prior. This is what our charter said. So we will not be voting on this tonight, even though we're against it, okay?
Okay.
We, we can't according to the charter, so my recommendation is going to be to lay it over until the next meeting, just so you understand what's going on.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
I would respectfully disagree with Counselor DeFlorio. When Mrs. Mahir, our city solicitor, was here at a committee meeting, she stated to us that in our charter, we can interpret the charter, if we deem necessary to not wait to seven days for a public safety matter, we do not have to wait to seven days to submit questions, and I believe that we can go forward tonight with asking some questions and possibly voting on this piece tonight, that she has given us the suspension of our charter.
It's not a, not a, not a routine matter, there's no public safety involved here.
Can I get an answer whether or not the mayor is in the building?
Oh, what? Is he? Not in the building. Okay, any further discussion? Your excuse, thank you very much, sir.
No, really.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do we have the chief of staff up before us?
I'm sorry, Counselor Napolitano.
Like the motion, never mind, we're not taking this tonight, right?
No. Counselor.
I'll pass.
Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this has been brought up over the years. As a matter of fact, it brings back memories when we hired a police chief that came from New York, and it didn't work out very well, I can tell you, the enthusiasm of the police department went downhill. And then he went to Mexico after two years, Chief Bon, Blondell, or whatever it was, but I believe, well, I know we're not voting on this tonight, but I believe that promotion should be within the ranks of the present fire department. We don't need a nationwide search, these are good men and women that work for our city. As Counselor Napolitano just mentioned, we had a crisis across the street at the Immaculate Conception. These gentlemen have been dealing with flammable materials, the most flammable materials in the, in the state, right here in Everett, Mass. They deserve to have some respect and to excel to the highest position, which is the chief of the fire department, within their ranks. The union representative, Mr. Hardy was just here, this was brought up two years ago, I was not here, but I fully support, within the ranks, the promotion of a new fire chief when Mr., when our present chief retires. Thank you.
Okay, I have an order to refer this to committee, Rosa.
Well, I would, we can either refer it to committee or lay it on the table for the,
Make a motion to refer to government operations.
I have a motion, okay, I have two motions, I have a motion to table it, and I have a motion to refer to government operations. Government operations will come first, referring to committee. I don't have a second on the motion to refer to committee. Are you seconding?
I am going to second, but I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, on the motion?
Yes.
Oh, on the motion.
Uh, the only reason why I believe it should go to committee is, I would like to just hear both sides, like you said you had a meeting earlier today, Mr. Hardy, and I think it's fair for everyone just to hear the reasoning on both sides, get all the information, and make a full informed decision from there.
Mr. Chairman, on the.
So, did you second the motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion made in second to refer to the committee.
On the motion.
Yes.
The reason why I said to refer, table it for the next time, we can still invite the mayor, we can still invite everybody here, all the councils are here. This goes to committee, half the councils are there.
Right.
Okay? So that was the reason why I had said table it for two weeks, have them, invite the mayor, invite Mr. Hardy up again for two weeks, we can hear both sides of story during the meetings, all of us.
All right, so, so we have motion, um, motion was to refer to the committee, that comes first, so all in favor signify by saying aye. All in favor signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, all opposed? One, two, three, and I'm opposed also for, uh, it has been referred to committee. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, clerk will read item number four.
Item number four, an order sponsored by Counselor John Hanlon as president to accept the grant of a hundred thousand dollars from his conference of mayors in the American Beverage Association to the health mayor account of support the mayor's goal to combat child obesity in the city of Everett.
No, section for favorable action on item number four. Did we send a letter to anybody here? No, this is a grant, huh?
I'm sorry. Tell them, Serge.
Uh, gentlemen, oh, never mind, go ahead, get them. He'll be able to talk you.
Who's that favoring?
Huh? No, the, where the hell are we? The motion was to, for favorable action. The what?
Counselor Capone.
I know.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
He's asking.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes, you have referred to the committee on government services.
Nine yezer nays.
Okay.
The order has passed.
Clerk will read item number twenty, uh, number five.
Chief, Mr. Chairman, if we could please take items one, two, and three collectively, and favorable action on the orders.
One, two, and three?
One, two, and three.
Oh, we already did? That's right, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Item number eight, suspend the rules, take item number eight.
All in favor of taking item eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, please, clerk, will you read item number eight?
Item number eight, sponsored by Counselor John Hanlon as president to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the city clerk's office salaries account, city clerk's office archives account for phase one of renovations to the archives, adding five rows of shelving at a total of twenty-nine sections.
Fable action on the order?
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Serge, uh, I have the sign and sheet, Sergio Canelio is on the sign and sheet, if anybody has any questions.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
I'll invite assistant city clerk, Sergio, I have a very simple one, I don't know if I need him, but if you want me to refer him. I would just like to know where the archives are actually held, here in the building or down the parking lot area, or?
The Massachusetts Archives are in Dorchester.
No, our archives.
Our archives. I know that, that's the University of Boston, thanks, Mr. President.
Lower level, it'd be right underneath the auditor's office.
Rather than in Mr. Materazzo's head, where he stores most stuff, where, where is the actual shelving going to be set up?
Yeah, there's a room, there's a room directly, actually, directly below the treasurer's office, on the lower level, all the way to the back.
Okay.
And that's where all our archives are kept.
Fantastic, thank you.
And you can review it at any time you want, just go into the clerk's office and they'll send you down, okay.
Fable action on the order?
Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion, all in favor signify by answering the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yezer nays, Mr. President.
Ten ye, you have passed the order. Clerk will go back to, where are we, item?
Item number five is an order sponsored by Counselor John Hanlon as president to accept the donation of twenty-five thousand dollars from District Gas of Massachusetts to the city of Everett's donation account to help fund the summer jobs program.
Fable action?
Motion made in second for favorable action, any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yezer nays, Mr. President.
Clerk to send the normal thank you letter, okay. Item number six.
Seven.
No, item seven.
Item number seven is an order to transfer one million five hundred thirty-eight thousand forty-one dollars from the general stabilization fund into the school department accounts per their request dated May third, two thousand and sixteen, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars Medicaid reimbursement, five hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars special education transportation, eighty-five thousand after school program.
Mr. Chairman, is this, to me, this is routine, I don't know, but you, you have to, uh, because we do this every year.
We do this every year.
So is it okay to vote on it tonight?
I would say so.
Okay, so favorable action on the order?
Second.
Second, motion made in second for favorable action, Counselman McGlaughlin.
What are the reimbursements?
This is done annually versus, I'm not really sure how this works, so we get a lump sum from the state, and then we give the school back the reimbursement, is that correct?
This is, this is, uh. This is from the Medicaid, this is money that they paid in, right? This is from the Medicaid, this is money that they paid in, right? This is money that the school teachers have paid, have paid into like their medical accounts. And because they deal with certain children, they get, they get a portion of that money back, and this is that money coming back, so it's not coming out of our taxes, really it is, but it isn't, so it's just going back to the school department. We get it, but it goes back to the school department.
So this is not budgeted, is this not budgeted in our annual budget?
No.
So we're receiving from the state and we're just reissuing it to the school? Thanks, Mr. President.
Counsel Napolitano.
If I might add regarding Medicaid reimbursement, it's the school department that puts, submits the paperwork that gets that money into the city in the first place. So they, they do the work, that money would not be coming to us otherwise, so.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to make sure we don't have any issues, I would make a motion to suspend Rule thirteen.
Motion made in second, suspend Rule thirteen, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rule thirteen has been suspended. On the motion of favorable action, all in favor, answer the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you pass the order. Item number, oh, item number nine.
Item number nine is an order sponsored by Counsel John Hanlon, his president, in order adding the school building commission to the administrative code.
Fable action?
I think the, the proper motion, if I may, Mr. President, is to refer to the city clerk to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
We have to have a public hearing on it first.
So moved.
Motion made in second to refer to the public clerks to call a public hearing. Any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll. It's an order, right?
No, you refer.
All right. All in favor, same, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred.
Item number ten, petition from Andrea Sitzos doing business at one thirty-five Broadway L C for a garage license at one thirty-five Broadway.
Is this the...
This is not a garage, as, if I may, this is not a garage, as you would think, a repair garage, no. This is cars parking underneath, uh, an apartment building.
Is this a new?
Yes, I don't think it had one before.
The location is not new, it's the owner, the prior owner just sold, there's a new owner, that's why it's before you, otherwise it's normally routine, which is issued out of our office.
Usually it doesn't come before the city council, but it's a new owner and he's coming in for a new license, but yes, there was a license there before.
So my recommendation is we refer it to the committee, to meet the new owners and...
Yeah, all it is is for cars to park under his building.
Yeah, make sure they follow the rules of the old license.
That's certainly within the...
Okay.
Motion made in second to refer the Subcommittee Committee on Business Development?
Business.
Business Development?
Yes.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
You have referred to the committee. Item twelve, eleven.
Item eleven, petition for precious metals license, small checks cash incorporated nineteen ninety-eight Revere Beach Parkway, it's a renewal.
Fable action on the order?
Okay, Counsel DePiero?
I just have a question, and perhaps our clerk could answer this. On a check cashing establishment, do they normally fall under a precious metal license or are they dealing with something different?
No, there's particular folk, they wanted to take, their license is different than others, they're not allowed to sell, they're only allowed to take in gold, they buy gold and then put it in the envelope and send it away, but no, they buy gold.
I see, thank you.
I don't have a second?
Second.
A second. Motion made in second for favorable action on the order, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, this is an order? No, it's okay. License granted. Item number twelve. I know, but no one was listening.
I don't know. Counsel Capone, I actually surrendered at that point. Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Pass the order. Item twelve.
Item number twelve, petition for secondhand dealer antique of precious metals license from Mazo Gold and Collectibles, three fifty-eight Berry Street, it's a renewal.
Fable action on the order?
Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You have passed the order for the secondhand dealer, clerk will read item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, petition for junk dealer's license from N S Metals Incorporated, three ninety-one Third Street.
Fable action?
Is this a renewal, uh...
Uh, renewal, yep.
Okay, favorable action on the order?
Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion, Counsel Delasola?
Just a question, how long a license good for?
One year.
One year.
One year? All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, if no further discussion, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You have passed the order and the petition. Communication, item number fourteen, clerk will please read, I just, I read that out in the front, but go ahead and read it.
Item number fourteen, communication for Department of Veteran Services, but invite to Memorial Day exercise on May thirtieth, twenty sixteen, the front gate of Glenwood Cemetery at nine thirty a.m., and march in as a group to the cemetery gazebo at ten a.m., and inviting Council President John Hanlon to offer remarks through the city to honor all the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice and those who have served on our behalf.
Fable action, accepted.
Accept the committee report and place on file.
Motion made in second for favorable action, to place on file. All in favor? Hope to see you all there. Item, clerk read, item fifteen.
Item number fifteen, Committee on Legislative Affairs, Elections Report on Ordinance Offered by Counsel John Hanlon, and the orders of a utility poll in the City of Everett that which remove or replace a poll must work before any workers, must, before any workers perform said utility zone must appear before the Everett City Council, with a recommendation for favorable action, the proposed ordinance is submitted and revised with amendments.
Okay. Motion, accept the committee?
So moved.
Motion made in second to accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have accepted the committee report. On the item?
Fable action.
Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion, hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order, ordinance. Clerk read, item sixteen.
Item number sixteen, Committee on Legislative Affairs Elections Report on Ordinance Offered by Counsel John Hanlon, that the existing double utility poll ordinance be established to remove double poll, double utility polls, a recommendation for favorable action on the proposed ordinance is submitted with amendments.
Accept the recommendation from committee and favorable action on the motion.
Motion made in second to accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of action on the order, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
I feel like Burley here. Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the ordinance. Clerk read, item seventeen.
Item number seventeen, Special Opioid Crisis Committee Report on a resolution offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon to the City Police Public Health Representative before the committee meeting to address the fake Xanax and fentanyl combination pill has been killing people in Florida. Individuals present this on the street and public should be notified or recommended for further time, and to have the Health Department and Police Chief research to see if they had reached this area and report back their findings at the next Special Opioid Crisis Committee meeting.
Grant, grant further time?
Accept committee report.
Accept committee report. Motion made in second to accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to grant further time.
And invite the individuals back.
Invite the health, health director and police chief?
Yes.
Second motion.
All motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
You have so referred. Item eighteen.
Item eighteen, Special Opioid Crisis Committee Report on Resolution Offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero, that the administration consider equipping every municipal building with knock-in, perhaps placed in every AED case likewise, that every school nurse and community health nurse be stocked with knock-in if they currently aren't, with a recommendation referred to Health Department, School Committee, and Mayor's policy directive, that report back the next meeting of the Special Opioid Crisis.
Accept the committee report.
Second. Refer to respective departments.
What was the motion?
Accept committee report, refer to respective departments and grant further time on the motion.
Motion made, accept to refer to your respective departments and for grant further time, all in favor?
Aye.
You have passed. Item nineteen.
Nineteen, Special Opioid Crisis Committee Report on Resolution Offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero, the administration first responders consider creating opioid response teams to follow up with addicts after overdoses, and offer different ways of help, with a recommendation for further time in Special Opioid Committee, to invite the fire chief, fire union, and Ms. Rollins to the next meeting.
Accept committee report and grant further time to committee.
Motion made, accept, accept the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion accepted, made and accepted for further time. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
You have referred. Clerk will read item thirty.
Twenty. Item number twenty, Special Opioid Committee Report on Resolution Offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon and Anthony DePiero, city consider different ways to limit indoor private sale of synthetic marijuana in the city, the recommendation referred to the Police Chief Health Department, State Senator Saldi Domenico, State Representative Joseph McGonigal, request response back from the next Special Opioid Crisis Committee meeting.
Accept committee report, refer to respective departments, grant further time on the motion.
Motion made, accept the committee report, grant further time and refer back to the committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved, you have moved, you have referred. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, Committee on Legislative Affairs Report on Resolution Offered by Counsel John McKinnon, Fred Capone, Wayne Matusky, that a state representative sponsored bill to the effect that any individual caught of a large amount of narcotics shall be charged with intent to distribute as a result, said amount, and shall face mandatory imprisonment for twenty years.
Motion made, accept, accept the committee report and refer back to sponsor, all in favor, I'm accepting the committee report.
Aye.
All opposed, you have accepted the committee report, Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to thank State Representative McGonigal, who appeared this evening in this chamber to fill us in on some of the work that is going on at the State House, along with Senator Saldi Domenico. We'll, we will be in contact, Counsel Capone spoke with the representative earlier, and Counsel McKinnon and I discussed this issue, and I want to thank them for being here, so I'd like to actually refer this back to sponsor at this time.
Motion made in second to refer back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred back to sponsor. Clerk will read, item number twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two, an ordinance sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone, that section twelve dash twenty-eight subsection C revised order in the City of Everett, hereby amended, by adding after last sentence another sentence relative to any company or organization from the solicitors employed for the purposes of due to solicitation shall be responsible for the individual violations.
Fable action, Damon?
Second motion.
Motion made in second for favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You have ordained the ordinance. Item number twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three, an ordinance sponsored by Counsel DeFlorio, Leo McKinnon, Mike Mangan, Mike McGlaughlin, Richard Delasola, Wayne Matusky, and Anthony DePiero, the salary of all members of the City Council shall be twenty-five thousand dollars annually effective January first, twenty eighteen, all members of the City Council receive two percent increase in the annual salary beginning on the first day of each calendar year, in an even number effective January first, twenty twenty.
Mr. President?
Counsel Dr. Floyd?
I just want everybody to know that they have the preamble, this has to be amended to add the preamble, and it's also, everybody has a copy on your desk and in their mailbox, so the recommendation is to amend, to add the preamble and favorable action on the order.
Motion made in second to add the...
You have to read the preamble.
Would you like me to read the?
Okay.
Whereas the City Council salary reflects similar salaries in nearby municipalities, and whereas a member of the City Council receives such salary for their services may from time to time be set by ordinances, and whereas no ordinance increases the salary of councils shall be effective unless it has been adopted by a two-thirds vote of the full City Council, during the first eighteen months of the term for which the City Council is elected, unless it provides that the salary increase should take effect upon the organization of the city government following the next municipal election, whereas no member of the City Council shall be eligible to participate in the city's group health or life insurance programs, therefore be ordained by the City Council as follows, and then the text of the actual ordinance.
So favorable action on your Damon?
Amended.
As amended.
Okay. Motion favorable action as amended, who seconded? I guess second, Anthony DePiero. Any further discussion?
First take a, a motion on the amendment, all in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A voice vote.
On the amendment, a voice vote, all in favor of adding the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so favorable action then as amended. Clerk, call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
No.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Eight yeas, two nays, Mr. President. Eight ayes, two nays, Mr. President.
Make a motion to file for reconsideration, hoping it does not prevail.
Eight ayes, two nays, you have passed the order. Counsel DeFlorio.
File for reconsideration, hoping it does not prevail.
Motion made, second to file for reconsideration. Any further discussion on the motion, hearing done? Clerk call the roll on reconsideration.
On reconsideration. Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
No.
Counsel DePiero.
No.
Counsel Matusky.
No.
Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
No.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
Counsel Hanlon.
No.
One aye, nine ayes, nine nays.
Reconsideration has failed. The order has passed. Item clerk will read item twenty-four.
Item number twenty-four, an order sponsored by Counsel DeFlorio, Counsel McKinnon, Mangan McGlaughlin, Delasola, Matusky, and DePiero. Salary for the position of mayor shall be one hundred thirty-eight thousand annually effective January first, twenty eighteen.
I have a motion to add the preamble to the mayor's raise. And everybody has a copy on your desk, and if the clerk will please read it.
That one I don't believe I have in front of me.
It's right on the bottom of the council.
Oh, I see. I see. I should get the right one. Yes.
Okay, whereas the salary of the mayor reflects some of salaries in nearby municipalities, and whereas the city council shall by ordinance establish an annual salary for the mayor, and whereas no ordinance increase in the salary of the position of mayor shall be effective unless it shall have been adopted by two-thirds vote of the full city council during the first eighteen months of the term for which the city council is elected unless it provides that the salary increases to take effect upon the organization of the city government following the next municipal election. Therefore, and so goes the text of the order.
Fable action on the amendment?
Second.
Motion made, second for favorable action on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Fable action on the order as amended to be ordained.
Motion made, second on the order as amended. Clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
No.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Nine ayes, one nay. Top, eight ayes, two nays.
Eight ayes, two nays, you have passed the, uh, passed the.
I make a motion to file for reconsideration with the hope that it does not prevail.
Second.
Motion for reconsideration, hoping it will not prevail. Second on the motion?
Second.
Second. Clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel Delasola.
No.
Counsel DeFlorio.
No.
Counsel DePiero.
No.
Counsel Matusky.
No.
Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
No.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
Counsel Hanlon.
No.
One aye, nine nays.
Reconsideration has failed. Clerk will read item twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five, an order sponsored by Counsel John Lee Hanlon is present. The city council hereby authorizes the city chief and angel lobster to reappoint the auditing firm of Powers and Sullivan to a three-year contract as the independent auditor for the city of Everett pursuant to the city charter is based on the CFO's recommendation.
Counsel Capone.
Can we please have the city audit before us?
Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Eric Gamis, CFO.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I know we talked about this subject at one of our most recent meetings. Kind of came up as a side issue with some of the win questions. I want to refresh my memory. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, have this group been doing it for three years already or no? Or has it been more than that?
I believe it's been actually one year at a time. However, when I put this council order forward, I didn't realize that the council had already taken action back in September. I had walked around and talked to the various departments, realized that action hadn't been taken. Once I had submitted the order at the prior meeting, that's when the city clerk had informed me when they started doing some research as to the number of years of the appointment in prior years. They realized that this council actually had, or the former council, had already taken action and authorized a three-year commitment back in September.
Yeah, I was actually just handed this, and so it's fiscal years sixteen through fiscal years eighteen.
Yes.
So was that, to the best of your knowledge, is that the first run that they've had with the city? Or have they reviewed the books, et cetera, prior to that timeframe?
They did fiscal thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. So they have just completed a three-year contract.
Okay. And so sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and we are looking for... With this one, what are we looking for?
This shouldn't be here. This should have been pulled. It was my understanding that this order was going to be pulled for tonight's meeting. Because the council actually took action back in September of two thousand and fifteen and reappointed Powers and Sullivan.
So we should be just voting it down then?
No action. No action.
No action necessary. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Actually, I do have one other question while we have you here. I don't have a problem with this firm. In your professional opinion, how long should a particular company be reviewing funds before you do it again? You find somebody new.
Best practices calls for anywhere from five to ten years. However, there's been a, there's been a transition, there's been a changing in the trend within the audit community over the past, I want to say, five to ten years. Organizations still want a new, fresh set of eyes, and what we've been finding is that more and more CPA firms have been doing less and less audits, certainly municipal audits, because of the complexity in the accounting standards and the auditing standards that are required. What we're, what I'm now seeing more often is that now that we're dealing with larger firms, rather than actually switching firms, we're doing partner rotations so that you're still getting a fresh set of eyes, but yet the city is not incurring the additional costs that would typically occur when you're hiring different auditing firms, so.
And that makes perfect sense. It is very specialized, and I know that there aren't many organizations that do it. And to get a whole another organization up to speed is going to be costly, so. I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Counsel McGlaughlin. All set? Any further discussion?
Excuse me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll accept the motion, refer back to city clerk. Motion made, second, refer back to city clerk, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Clerk will read twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six, an order sponsored by Counsel Wayne Matusky, in accordance with the provisions of chapter seventeen, section seventeen point one B, of the revised ordinance of the city of Everett, names and destination erection of the sideposts to dedicate the intersection of Walcott and Marlborough Street with an alternate location of Chelsea Street and Walcott Street in honor of Dr. Joseph E. Cognata, former Navy veteran, at the request of the family.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to actually amend this and add Counsel Capone to this order.
Second motion.
Motion made, add Counsel Capone, all in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much to the sponsor. I do appreciate it. My family has a long history with Dr. Cognata and their family. He was a wonderful man. His wife was a wonderful woman. They got a couple of great kids. One of the sons, Michael, followed in his footsteps, had a practice in this city for many, many years. This is truly one of those solid Everett families. So I know that there was a moratorium at some point. I don't know if that's still in effect, but if it isn't, I wholeheartedly support this. The Cognata family is Everett, so I would ask for favorable action.
Most second, second anyone? Motion second, favor. This should be referred to the Veterans Department? Most second made to refer to the department? Veterans Department, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Clerk read item twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven, resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael McGlaughlin to invite the mayor, DPW director in the contract of Sacramento Park renovations to the next government operations, public safety and service committee to meeting to discuss Sacramento Park renovations.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President, on the motion. I have a couple of questions. If the chief of staff could appear before us this evening to answer, if it's okay.
Please identify yourself for the listening audience, viewing audience.
Good evening, Kevin O'Donnell, chief of staff.
Sterling, thank you for appearing this evening. I have a couple of brief questions, and then I do intend on sending this to committee. But I was told when we attended the opening day of Little League at Sacramento Park most recently that the construction was going to start immediately after the baseball season was over. We, baseball season is over in July or so. And this says that this is going to go out to bid and start construction this fall. So I have some confusion on what the timeline is that we're actually going to start work. It's not this summer, it's this fall, is that accurate? Do you know?
Uh, no, it's my understanding it's going to be in July. I believe sometime after the fifteenth or around the fifteenth.
So this, it's, this report that we received says we anticipate putting construction out to bid midsummer to start construction this fall. So is that, is that a false, not false, but is that inaccurate? Because I was also on the, in the standard it was going to start in July as well.
That's my understanding. I don't know where you got the correspondence or anything, but that was my understanding, last conversation I had with the city planner.
Okay, it did come from Mr. Souza, so, from Mr. Souza, CC, and yourself, and so that's, I'm a little confused on timeline. But I do have some questions regarding the actual design of the park. It had been brought to my attention that there are some concerns from the parents and from the organizers that are involved in Little League organization down there, and I think you probably aware some of those concerns, but we'll talk about that in committee. But I'll yield the floor to any of my colleagues that might have a question this evening on this.
Counsel Delasola.
I know we're going with the committee, but just a quick thing. Can we, the contractor, when is this going to go to committee? Because it's going off the bid and it says bring the contractor. So it can't go to public safety until the contractor's awarded to somebody.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
When is this going to go off the bid so we have a contractor?
Right. We're inviting the mayor and DPW, we're inviting the contractor.
For Thursday night's meeting, yeah.
So who's the contractor then? Right, so, that's what I'm saying. It says invite the contractor, and who are you going to invite at the meeting if there's no contract yet?
Yeah, Counsel McGlaughlin.
I'm going, I was under the understanding that this had already gone out to bid. I'm going to amend item, the item by striking out contractor and inserting NASA engineering, the architect and engineer in place of contractor at this point.
Second, Ed.
Motion made, second, to amend that by removing the contractor and putting in the engineer. Any discussion on that, hearing done, all in favor? All opposed, you have amended.
And excuse, Miss customary thanks. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, for appearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Donnell. On the motion, I mean on the order. Resolution, whatever it is. Anybody, yes, counsel?
I'm going to make a motion that we send this to government operations, public safety, and public service and asking the individuals that are listed on this report to appear, not a designee of them, but the individuals that are listed here to appear in person in committee. Thank you.
Is there anything you might want to ask them? You know, I don't want them to come not knowing what Counsel McGlaughlin still has the floor.
I'm also, also on the, on the motion for amendment, I would also like to add somebody from the Little League organization to appear to talk about renovations of the park.
You can invite anyone at the committee, you can invite anyone, but what I'm asking is that are there any questions you want to ask these people?
Sure.
Any specific question?
The main question is, the main question is here. It was renovations of the, of the park. Talk about the specific renovations of the park and talk about how the design was created and if there's an opportunity to be able to revisit the design before we go out to contract for the renovations.
Okay, all right. Counsel Delasola.
I was making sure the engineer was going to be here.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments? All in favor of referring to committee and invite those so named? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have referred to committee, item twenty-eight.
Item number twenty-eight, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Lee McKinnon to have engineer come before government operations, public safety, and public service committee to explain when Ashton Street will be repaved and finished as well as the side streets off Ashton Street.
Refer to government operations. Motion made, second, refer to government operation, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? You have referred to committee. Clerk read item twenty-nine.
Item number twenty-nine, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Lee McKinnon that the ISD department, including code enforcement as well as the engineering department, come before the government operations, public safety, and public service committee now helping giving input to proposing an ordinance to, one, have proposed bids that are awarded to dig within city limits for parks and building new development, have to bait or bait trap said site before, during, and after to stop past problems. Two, and to look into a bait trap system to be implemented at all dumpster sites throughout the city to prevent problem of pass at these locations and to stop future neighborhood problems from said sites.
Refer to government operations, invite those said to be there. Motion made, second, to refer to government operations, all in favor?
Aye.
You have referred. Item number thirty.
Item number thirty, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Lee McKinnon to have the chief of, chief police attend government operations, public safety, and public service committee meeting to explain what we will be doing to beef up patrols in anticipation of summer and to see if there will be increased motorcycle, bicycle patrols, as well as any additional hotspots for foot or car patrols in anticipation of summer months.
Counsel McKinnon. Refer to government operations, invite the chief. Motion made, second, refer to government operations, invite chief of police, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You have referred to government operations. Item thirty-one.
Item thirty-one, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Lee McKinnon to have the fire chief, fire union representatives of both come before the special opioid crisis committee to discuss setting up a program to do outreach in the community. Some of the other communities are doing to help families of recently overdosed individuals that have survived and would like or need information on recovery.
Refer to opioid crisis committee, invite said. Yeah, I'm sorry, who do you invite to? Invite the fire chief, fire union, representatives of both. Okay, all right. Come before. Motion made, second, refer to the opioid committee and to invite those listed, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred, item thirty-two.
Item number thirty-two, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Lee McKinnon to policy director Catherine Hines give us an update on our next meeting of the city council on grants that are being sought after for opioid recovery or prevention. Give an in-depth report of the mayor's committee to the city on the activity for that committee and as a collaborative effort, the opioid committee formed by President Hanlon will give an in-depth report on all activity to date as well as to inform the city of our efforts.
Refer to the next meeting, invite said. Most second, most consecutive, refer to committee, and invite those, all in favor?
Next meeting.
Next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Item thirty-three.
Item number thirty-three, resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter Rina-Napolitano, request city engineer, fair government operations, public safety, and public service meeting to discuss any plans for changing traffic path in Church Street.
Counsel McGlaughlin. Refer to traffic operations, public safety, and public service committee. Motion made, second, refer to government operations, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred. Item thirty-four.
Item thirty-four, resolution sponsored by Counsel Richard Delasola and Mike McGlaughlin, ask DPW director for an update on the sidewalk improvement on Linden Street at the corner of Maple Ave.
Counsel McGlaughlin, okay.
On the motion, I should have done this previously. I'd like to amend this by adding Counsel DeFlorio, seeing that this is in her ward and she has worked on it previously with us. Make a motion to amend this by adding Counsel DeFlorio's name to it as well.
Motion made, second, to add Counsel DeFlorio as a sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, on the motion, I mean on the order, Counsel Delasola.
I'm referring this to government operations.
Motion for government operations, both.
Yes.
Refer to governor.
Mr. Chairman, I don't understand why this is being referred to government operations because all we're asking is when the sidewalk's going to be done. Actually, it could be done with a simple phone call. But I put my name on it because it is my ward, and we have been working on it the last two years. So all it takes is a phone call, call up Chevy Navarro, ask him, it's going to be done within the next two weeks. That's all we have to do. I don't see why something like this has to go to committee.
This can't take more than two weeks.
Mr. President, on the motion, I respectfully disagree with my good colleague from Ward Five. We were told in the wintertime that this would be done as soon as spring broke. And again, it's not a reflection on Mr. Navarro or DPW. I have some concern about the scope of work that is there on Linden Street that is needed, as I did back in the wintertime. It's a large project. We see the city DPW going out every day and doing individual panels, and they're equipped to do that. To do a scope of work that's two hundred plus feet of linear feet of cement, I have concern over. I'd like to have a discussion with him about, are we able to do it in-house? Do we need to look at going outside of the city to be able to finish the project? What's our timely looking like? Like Counsel Delasola just said, you're not going to finish this in a reasonable amount of time. It needs, some questions need to be asked before we go forward on this item.
Okay, Counsel DeFlorio.
The reason why it wasn't done in the spring is because if you, if everybody knows, we've had rain for the last three months. So unfortunately, cement has to have the right timing to be done. So, but I have no problem with, we can send it to committee, that's fine, thank you.
Motion made, second, refer to committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Item thirty-five, please.
Item number thirty-five, order sponsored by Counsel John McKinnon Wayne Matusky, candidates for election be screened to have proof of residence and that such proof of residence of candidate reside in said ward and said city he is running in accordance with, to the city charter and all applicable laws of the Commonwealth and that we have the city clerk appear at government operations, public safety, and public service to discuss said process before next election.
Counsel, Canada, Matusky, Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the last city election, Mr. President, I was quite disturbed as I was campaigning and talking to various residents in the city. And, you know, people would say to me, did you know that this candidate lives in Somerville? Did you know this candidate lives in Gloucester? Did you know this candidate lived in North Reading? Did you know this candidate lived in Billrica? Come on now. And there was a statement made by the city clerk the last election, who I respect a hundred percent, and I always have, I've served with you up here. It is, I believe it is incumbent upon the candidates that seek office in this community to challenge somebody's residency, okay? We have an issue here. I can, I agree with, if you want to challenge somebody's signatures, that is questioning somebody's signatures, okay? It is not my job to find out where people live, okay? There was twenty-nine candidates on the ballot in this city last election, maybe thirty. Twenty percent, up to, at least four candidates, okay, did not live in this city. And it could be as many as six, okay? Now, I live on Lewis Street, everybody knows that. I don't have any outside interest in living anywhere else at this point in my life, and I've been up here for a long time. I am not going to question somebody's residency. It's the job of the city clerk. And we just passed a bill up here, which I opposed, I didn't vote for, giving that authority to some commission now, that we don't have the expert like we do in Mr. Matarazzo. You people that voted for that will, you can revisit that yourself. But I am not going to be on a ballot with people that don't live in Everett. There was two or three at the enlarged race, a couple in the ward races, now I hear that somebody on the school committee. Now, I'm not questioning anybody's integrity here. Everybody in this, this room that seeks election knows what I'm talking about. There's no hidden secret here. I don't know what's going on, but this has never occurred. We had eighteen members of the common council and seven from the board of aldermen and the school committee. It was never an issue. All of a sudden, in this last election, I don't know, I don't get it, okay? I am not going to be spending my money on a campaign running against somebody who does not live in the city. Now, I may seem a little upset about this, and I am, because it's unfair and it's illegal. Counsel McKinnon and I have talked about this issue over the last six months, actually. It is a joke. People know who lives in this city, okay? It's not my job to say candidate X lives in Gloucester or whatever it may be. I'm not going to do that. The city clerk's office should get at least several identifications. We'll just go like this, car insurance bill, okay? That's pretty good. A tax bill, if it's applicable to personal and property that he says he lives at. A cable or a phone bill, an electric bill, where they voted in the last six elections. Some people are actually registered here that don't live here, but that's another matter. I am not going to do this again next election. I'm going to run again, but, you know, if I keep my mouth closed here at the meeting, I'm going to feel bad next election. I'm not going to do that anymore. I'm going to say what's on my mind and the people that contacted me. We will solve this problem in the legislative affairs, I mean, in the government affairs committee in the upcoming weeks. But this is over the top now. I know we have some people that might say, I'm Matusky, he's blowing hot air. I'm not blowing hot air, and I'm not going to mention names because I'm not the kind of person, like some people around here. But I can tell you, when it, when you get twenty percent of thirty, twenty-nine people that don't live in Everett, Mr. President, it says something about our character, of our city, and it's no reflection on our Mr. Matarazzo. But the statement was made that we have to challenge. I'm not challenging anybody. I'm challenging the city to do the right thing and have, we're going to set some rules if we can do it. Now, I don't know why this isn't in the charter. I know that you do sign a pains and perjury affidavit that says you live here. Now, I know that's applicable for all, even your signatures. You're supposed to sign off that you, these people know you and they actually sign. But I'm not talking about, that's a whole nother issue, and I don't have any issues with that. My issue is if you run for office in Everett, you should live here and hopefully pay your taxes. But if you don't own property, that's fine. There were some candidates that said they're going to move to Everett after they win. I mean, come on. Now, I've been around, you know, and I hate to keep saying this, since nineteen eighty-one. I actually ran in seventy-nine, but I am not going to stand for this, I'm not. And, you know, and I'm not going to challenge people. I am going to have the law department in this city, the city clerks, we're going to devise an ordinance in the, in the committee to actually protect the integrity of our elections in this community. Now, I'm sorry to bring this up, Mr. President, but I feel it's time. Everybody in this chamber knows, that's in the, everybody in this chamber knows. Everybody who's building knows. If it's one person, it's bad enough, but when you're up to possibly six, come on. Thank you very much.
Counsel McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd like this to actually go to government operations, invite the city clerk, invite the assistant city clerk, and city solicitor, so that we can actually take a look at it and see if there is anything that we can do with this to actually maybe stick to the charter where you have to live within your domicile in the ward and also stick to the charter that you have to live in the same city as it states in the charter. So that's what I'd like to do with it. If we could do that, that would be great. And then also if we can produce something to where, something similar maybe to Boston, what they do over there. We're looking into that now, so we should have the answers to that before it gets into committee.
So we just want to refer it to the city clerk?
I want to, government operations.
Government operations.
And you want to refer the city clerk and the assistant city clerk?
Yes. And the city solicitor, please.
Motion made, second, to refer to such, government operations to invite the city clerk and the assistant city clerk. Okay, Counsel McKinnon.
And we have city solicitor and Maureen DePiero.
Please add the city solicitor and Maureen DePiero, who was the registrar of votes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Matusky, did you add everything there?
Just one, yes, I am awaiting from the Boston Election Commission their procedures. Just one, yes, I am awaiting from the Boston Election Commission their procedures. Now, we have a, we require all appointments and all employees to live in Everett, with the exception of department heads. If we can't at least get the candidates to live in Everett, Mr. President, we got a problem. And Council McKinnon brings up a good point. They have to live in the ward. Well, I just want them to live in Everett, okay? You know, and, and go from there. And by the way, I don't want Mr. Matarazzo to think anyway, he's always had the intelligence and the integrity.
It's not, it is the responsibility, in order to challenge somebody's candidacy, you'd be challenging their registration, because in order to be a calendar, I mean, a candidate, you must be registered. You must be registered properly, must be registered where you live. You would be challenging their registration. And that would be, that hearing is held before the registrars of voters. It need not be a candidate, by the way. A citizen can challenge it, there need not be a candidate. And it's all under Chapter 51, Section 48 and 49 of the Mass General Laws. It's a hearing, those who go back, I don't see anyone except for, except for Council Handland that goes back that far. I do, but, but one of those hearings actually did take place. In fact, my wife was serving on the registrar voters at the time. And it was before, I believe I was on the city council at the time. And there was a challenge to a residency, and it's a hearing held before the registrars of voters.
And what happened at that meeting, Mr. Clerk?
The, that particular time, the person, from what I recall, was single. And it was very difficult to prove residency or non-residency on a, on a single person. So in that case, there was ruled, was against the challenge on that particular case.
Okay.
But it's a hearing that's held before the registrars of voters, not the City Clerk.
Council McKinnon?
We'd like you there for your guidance.
You got it.
And we'd also like the Assistant City Clerk there for his guidance, so that we can actually have this all squared away. With that being said, I believe in Boston, what they do is they actually send out an officer or an investigator, and they ask your neighbors where, in fact, you do live. And they actually go to surrounding neighbor, your, your neighbors in the area to make sure that you are living there for a period of a year at least. So, you can't go to move to like Somerville and then bop back in when you feel convenient for yourself, because that's what's been going on sometimes. Here, Mike. Excuse me, Mr. Clerk. So, that's what we're getting at, okay? So, we'd like to see this go to the committee, if we could do that, that would be great.
Motion made in second to refer to the committee and to invite.
Just one comment, Mr. Clerk.
To invite the City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk and Maureen DePero, who is in charge of elections. Any further discussion? Yes, Council Matuzzi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I asked the City Clerk, you know, what was the reason, because the person was single?
Yeah, it's a.
I don't get that equation there.
Well, not to go into it too much, but.
I know, but I, you know.
It's a lot easier to prove residency on a, on a, and I'll, I'll explain that committee, but it's a lot easier to prove residency on a married person because you have the spouse, the children, where the children go to school. It was a lot more difficult on a, it was not a property owner. So, a lot of things got.
All right.
It needs to be looked at.
But the truth, as Council McKinnon mentioned, we are awaiting some information from the City of Boston, Election Division, and the Secretary of State's office. And there's no reflection on Mr. Matarazzo. I don't want to make that perfectly clear here.
No, it's fine, it's not my responsibility.
My intention, Mr. President, my intention, and hopefully the, the members of this council, and they are, you know, everybody knows what I'm talking about. And this is the, you know, and I, I know everybody has their own way of doing things, but I'm not going to go along to get along anymore as far as turning a blind eye to the situation. And I don't think it's worthy of my character and the people of Everett deserve to have people that actually live here. You know, who knows, the incentive with the increase in pay may get more of this going on, you know? And I want to make sure that we get it under control before the next election. And it will be worked out as an ordinance. We will devise it, okay? We are going to have, you're going to sign, not only sign a piece of paper, but you're going to sign a piece of paper that says we're going to look at where you live and where you sleep, and where you pay your bills and your car insurance, and that's where you say you live? You'll be afraid to sign that paper when they see what they've got to do to be a candidate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, on the motion to refer to committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred to committee. Clerk will read the next item, which is thirty-six, I believe.
Item number thirty-six, resolution sponsored by Council Peterina Politan of City of Everett enacted moratorium issuing variance on any new check cashing money services business outside of the prescribed adult entertainment district as described in Section 21A.
Council Politan?
Thank you. The thing is that, what brought this about was that I've noticed a, we've got a check cashing business that opened across the street from us here. There's a new one going on, on Main Street. I have no issues with what I'm seeing, how these places are operating. But that's not the point. The point is that 12 years ago, the Board of Aldermen reckoned that we had a serious problem in the city where we had a lot of businesses coming in that were doing wire transfers, check cashing, so on and so forth. If you read right at the beginning of the, of Section 21A, Adult Entertainment Use Declaration of Purpose, this, there is documented experience in cities across the United States showing that adult entertainment uses, uses degrade the quality of life in the areas of a community where they're located with impacts including increased levels of crime, blight and depreciation of property values. Now, I don't feel that the ones that have, have recently gone in or are potentially going in in the near, very, very near future meet that situation. But this is taking the cork off the bottle. With the casino coming in, the potential of other businesses coming in and thus, and ever becoming an attractive draw to these type of businesses is going to create problems. Okay, Section eight indicates the information about check cashing businesses. And I worked quite a bit, I worked quite closely with a lot of these businesses when I was in the banking world, okay? And every one of them, at one point or another, there were problems. Whether it was questions of money laundering, whether it was questions of, of cashing illegal checks. You know, this opens a door that does not attract the best quality of people to our city. You know, the premise that it's a service for the low income and the elderly, it's not a service for the low income and the elderly. It's a service that takes more money away from low income and the elderly. A lot of our banks here in the city, a lot of our community banks are well-established. They've got great relationships with, with our residents. You know, if you, if you maintain enough balance, or even in some cases, there is even no fees to cash a check. But this is something here that we're going to potentially have a lot of serious issues with down the road, especially when we start, when the casino opens up and there are people looking for cash, quick cash. So, I, I think that these businesses need to be restricted to the adult entertainment area. It's a resolution, it's non-binding on our behalf because we don't license them. But they do need to go before the Board, the Board of Appeals for variance if they want to set up shop outside of the, the prescribed areas. So I would ask that the City Council indulge me to vote favorable for this and send, we can send this to the Board of, Board of Appeals, the Planning Board and the Mayor's Office to at least express our concerns that a little more forethought be gone in before these licenses are issued. You know, if they feel in their good judgment that the, that the business is going to benefit the area it's going in, I have no issue with that. But if you look at some of the ones that have popped up and disappeared over the past 12 years, these are not the best places. And I, I think this is something that we need to be proactive on. So I would ask that you, I would ask for favorable action on this item, and I also invite any other further discussion from, from the Council.
Motion for favorable action, refer to the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board and the Mayor's Office. Okay. Any further discussion on this motion, any further comments? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you have referred.
Thank you.
Clerk will read item number thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven, resolution sponsored by Council Michael J. McGlaughlin to invite Mayor Colleen Marie to the next Government Operations, Public Safety and Public Service Committee meeting to discuss infold, the host community agreement that was made between Wind, Boston Harbor and the City of Everett.
Council McGlaughlin?
Think this is a pretty self-explanatory item. Like to have a discussion, we signed a host community agreement with Wind Resorts three years ago or so. I'd like to just revisit the item. There's some questions that I have regarding language in the host community, like it states that $5 million will be issued for public safety. What exactly is public safety classified? Is it, is it police and fire personnel, is it signage, is it new? What is public safety? So, I, I have questions up and down the host community agreement to just get clarification on different items. Like to refer to committee, we can have an open conversation to freshen everybody's memory on the host community and go from there. And invite our CFO, amend this by adding CFO, to the invitation list for the committee meeting, please.
Okay, Council Matuzzi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I know that, I mentioned the last time we were talking, discussing a Wind thing. I just want to be real brief. I want to thank the City Clerk for sending that nice letter to the City of Somerville and advertising in the newspaper. Clerk Matarazzo, the wording of that letter was probably one of the best things I've seen come out of City Hall a long time. It was perfect. He did a wonderful job, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion made in second to refer to such matter, Government Operations, and invite the Mayor and the CFO. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, you have referred to Government Operations with those invited. Clerk will read item number thirty-eight.
Item number thirty-eight is an ordinance sponsored by Council John Handel, who's present to Section 14-2 of the revised ordinance of the City of Everett. He has been amended by striking out the Fray Chief of Police or Other. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passes. The order is to correct a contradiction in Section 14-2 of the revised ordinances relative to the appointment of the Police Chief. If I may, Mr. President, as you know, and it's funny, it came up tonight, but the Police Chief was taken off of City's Civil Service quite a while ago. There is one small section where it's still referred to, and it's 14-2. So in order to make it comply with the rest of the ordinances regarding the appointment of the Chief, that phrase needs to be stricken out.
Okay, favorable action on the order?
Motion made, and, second?
It can be.
Councilor Capone?
If.
Councilor Capone?
Well, I'm hearing the echoes of, is it routine, so that, that's your call.
It's an ordinance.
That's your call, so. But what I wanted to do is, it is an ordinance, it will need, it will need enrollment, ordainment. Yeah, because I personally want to look at it first before I vote on it. So I'd actually rather just lay it on the table till our next, till our next meeting.
Yeah, fine.
We can vote on it tonight if there's any.
Yeah, I don't want to vote on something I haven't read. That's, that's the only thing I'm saying. So I'm laying, I'm going to move that we lay it on the table.
Motion we have in a second? Motion made in second to lay it on the table, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved, you have laid it on the table. I'll take one more motion.
I don't.
Motion made, second, second to adjourn, all in favor? Okay, we have adjourned.